It was really random the way it did it. I don't, I was like, what I did, but I must have clicked on something.
Madam Chairman, we're live again.
Very liberating.
Welcome back to our Monday, November 22 meeting. Next up is our road and bridge presentation from Jeff McFadden. Jeff, let's start. We added to our agenda today a conversation for Smiths Ferry Drive for the Cascade Veterinary Clinic, to use that so that they can get down to their Garden Valley Clinic. Last time the road was closed, Keith and his team was driving around and it took them five hours. Then they had to go to Garden Valley. So they're requesting be able to use Smiths Ferry Drive to get over.
I'm not the one deciding who's using it.
I just want the input from you.
Right, right now it's a slick muddy mess.
Okay.
And we're not going to maintain it for anybody.
Okay. So as long as it's passable, then, you know, they are taking full responsibility and liability for being able to go over that road. And I want that on record that we will not be liable if anything happens.
Right.
Going over that road.
And I, I don't know how the flaggers are working on that, but if they're running flaggers 24 hours a day on that, the wreck.
Well, that, that was what I was going to ask you too, is do we know what they're doing as far as the hard closure on that?
Well, it doesn't matter. There's road close signs up. So anybody that goes beyond those barriers, they can't turn around and tell us. They can't sue us. They can't do nothing because we have the legal, last three barricades up there that says the road is closed. If they want to go around them, then they're on their own. Just like going over Lick Creek in the winter when, when it's closed, Ed Wood, all that stuff.
So let me ask, Dave, have you guys had to go up there and rescue anybody? Have we had, no, at this time? We haven't had any slide offs that you've had to respond to or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
He was off last week, so he wasn't involved with the three wrecks up there.
So there were some.
There were some, Jeff?
There was a rollover up there and then two other slide offs, I believe. That's the only ones that I know of.
So you guys are risking a lot to go that way, you know?
I, I mean, so it'd be like me using it. I trust my driving. It's everybody else that scares me. Especially on the Round Valley side. It's narrow, it's steep, and old back road driving etiquette is the person going uphill has a right of way. That person coming down, if they meet in one of those narrow spots, they got to get stopped and backed up.
Are the lumber trucks using it at all still?
Boggers are done.
They're done. Okay.
Could I just ask you, Aaron, so how often do you guys need to go down there? I mean, what do you think? Like, we got a week.
So I, I know right now without any hesitation, Keith is scheduled down there tomorrow. So he'd be down tomorrow, back tomorrow.
Sir, I apologize. For the record, can you provide me with your name?
Aaron, A-A-R-O-N, Cook.
Probably need to go to the mic. We're recording and nobody can hear you, so.
It's Aaron, A-A-R-O-N, Cook, C-O-O-K.
Thank you.
And, and Keith and yourself would be the only ones authorized to use it? No one else goes back and forth?
As of right now, yes. I mean, there might be a cer- a circumstance where we have to get Dr. Paul or Dr. Dan to, if we have to have assistance, but yes, it, as of what our intent would be, it would just be Keith and I, and only as absolutely needed.
And again, we're supposed to have snow. I mean, you guys could get to the top and you may not find it passable after tomorrow, so.
Right. And Keith and I have discussed that. And, you know, if, if that comes to it, that comes to it. We don't, I mean, we turn around and, you know, if we are on that steep part on, because I've been driving that road for, you know, 35, 40 years. And so if we are into it and it doesn't look good, we'll stop them back out. It's, we're, I mean, we're not, we don't want to put ourselves at risk, let alone anybody else.
Okay. Motion then.
Well, so there was two part. You need to acquire a reason why we're saying that this was an emergency. And then we need a motion with a reason with it. Is that could?
Yeah, make, make a record of the reason for the emergency.
So I would make state, state that we have had a catastrophic landslide on our highway and that it's major interruption to traffic and that we have certain key and critical needs that we need to go back and forth through that area. And then I guess I would make a motion that we allow Cascade Veterinary Clinic to use that on a risk assumed as needed basis for the next week till that thing opens up back up.
And, and if you need absolute clarification, I will ensure that it's just Keith or I. I, I can talk to Keith about that. And I'm assuming if, you know, obviously there'd have to be notification, whatever. But if we have to have Dr. Dan or Dr. Paul, I, I sent an email to you guys or whatever. I, I don't know how to go about this.
I would just state that you guys are liable one way or another, and you better put your best drivers on it or else.
We will absolutely stomach that liability.
Yeah. So if those guys don't have the experience you have, you may need to chauffeur them back and forth.
And in, in the perfect world, next week is going to be open.
Yeah.
You know, and.
In a perfect world.
In a perfect world.
Right. I understand that. And I don't expect it myself, but whatever.
Sorry, I'm running out of juice here.
The other thing I was going to ask you, Jeff, is what do we need to do to get in touch with the flaggers? Or the contractor that's doing the flagging down there? We had the list that we had sent as far as the logging traffic.
Guy's name's Alex D. Duck.
Can you reach out to him and tell him that we have another scenario that we're going to add somebody in?
Are they letting the mail trucks go over?
They were.
Okay.
I don't know.
They're roofed too, I don't know.
They, they hauled on that slide a little bit yesterday, but yeah.
You know, is that thing moving from the top? Because really it didn't look like a, a lot of material on the road. It looked like, you know, a loose cannon at the top.
It's sloughing from the top.
Yeah, you start pulling stuff off and it's just.
There's a clay layer up there. It's got water on it, so. Yep. I talked to the old road guy here that was retired 20 plus years ago and he tried to tell him that that, that was moving 20 years ago and they didn't believe him. Just weird, that's that wet corner. Going down the canyon, there's always water in that ditch right there, even in July. And that's where it happened.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor as to why this is an emergency and to allow the vet clinic over. So I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Go.
Something in writing that assist in, in case there's not the, the communication before tomorrow.
Hey, I will get the email out to them as soon as I get back to the office.
Thank you.
By noon today.
You need my name as well as Dr.?
No, I'm just going to say Cascade Veterinary Clinic. Needs emergency access to get to the Garden Valley Clinic.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, Jeff, we were standing in front of that hill, what, two weeks ago? They were telling me that that was the secured section of the hill. And I asked, what are the little white pipes at the bottom? And they said, that's to release water from the back of the hill. And I'm going.
What happens when those pipes get plugged up?
Yeah. Be interesting.
Let's do, I got a couple of things here. Let's do this action item for Packer John Road. I'm hiring a contractor to do that. He's going to be doing it with his pickup and then he's got a eight foot snow blower he'll also be using. Going to save us a lot of time and headache because he lives down there and they already plow the road for the Murray Creek residents. Just made sense just to pay this guy a small amount of money every winter, just to do it that way. We're not running our plow trucks up and down the road, trying to get road graders back and forth.
Is that all we were doing down there, right?
Yes.
Absolutely made sense.
Yep. Mile and a half. He, I think it ends up being like two and a half miles of road, but yeah, he's got me on the lower end of his, well, not the lower end of it. It's about average pace scale for his pickup and the snow blower. So it's, he's right in line with what he wanted.
Good with that? I'd make a motion and we sign the winter maintenance agreement for Packer John Road.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that'll save you one guy having to go down there on a snow route.
Let sand loosen that Round Valley area. Do a little more. That means demoted rights too. Sorry, I didn't notice that. You just stop down at your office, Doug.
She needs to watch this.
Witness.
Okay. Have you been over that Round Valley road? Or not Round Valley, sorry, Smiths Ferry?
Not since it starts snowing. I don't go up it because that steep section, there's nothing there to stop you from falling through.
And that's going down towards Smiths Ferry on the other side.
The other side's not bad. This side dropping into Round Valley, you come up over the top and it's just probably about a 12 to 14% off of there. And right now it's, it had ice on it, got mud on it.
The slippery mud right now is the.
And there's a lot of that where two, two little Subarus couldn't pass. It's a narrow road. Need to go on while we're waiting on an notary? So we've had issues with a retaining wall over here on the reservoir side over here on Landale. I went over and met with them twice. They did it without a permit. I didn't even know it was happening until the neighbors called and said, what are we going to do about it? I went over there. Can't have that there. Told them that day it needed to be moved. A month later, I went back. Still wasn't moved. There was an excavator there. I talked to the guy and he goes, yep, I'll take care of it. Still not moved. So I got the prosecutor's office involved. We've drawn up, they're supposed to be, I took Brian over there last week with me and I don't, I don't know if that might have put the fear of God in him. I don't know. But Wednesday they're scheduled to move it back to where my designation, my line that I made for them.
Fear of Oki. It's the fear of Oki.
Yeah. Standing out there when it's 20 degrees in a tee shirt and shorts. It was cold. So Brian has drafted up a kind of an addendum to our construction and right of way permit because it's going to be a permanent structure. And at any time, it's just like utilities, if, if for some reason we got to go in and do road work widening, utilities need it moved because it's on top of their phone line, whatever, they're responsible to move it.
Does it require engineering? Is that part, are they building? Do they have to get a building permit or?
Building's almost done. The house is almost done.
And so the retaining wall.
For their driveway.
Did it require engineering or anything? Is it over four feet?
I have no idea. It's, yeah. It's probably close. I don't know what the designation of engineering is for a retaining wall. But I know they should have got a permit because it, half of it's in our right of way. And they pushed it out in the road. So now the road's got this weird little bobble in it and.
Do we have anything on our, on our permitting process that if it's over a certain height that requires engineering?
City McCall does. I don't know if we do. City McCall's over three feet.
Yeah, we should definitely do that. I mean, that, that is something that we should look at. Anywhere I've ever been, anything that's over, I think ours has always been four feet. We've always had to engineer it, get somebody in there.
We'd ask. Send her an. Or not an.
Net.
Net. Started with an A.
I would ask, yeah.
Good. Sounded wrong when it came out of my mouth. So we have a gentleman that, he runs a construction business in Donley in the summertime. He bought a coffee trailer. IDL said he wanted to put it in Francie Wallace and they said no because it's against the agreement. He wants to know if he can park it on the road with the other pickups and snowmobiles. Why not? He's in line with all the other pickups and trailers. So he's going to want to know why you're not going to allow him to do that.
Because the other pickups and trailers shouldn't be there either. We need to look at that whole thing as far as.
It, it says parking on this side of the road only up there.
Okay.
On the west side of the road?
West side of the road.
I thought that said no parking all the way down there.
No, it says no parking on the upcoming side, but parking between, parking this side only, parallel parking.
Oh, if he's got a coffee trailer, he's not just parking a truck and closing the door and walking away. He's got people walking up to that vehicle all day long. And so now you've got pedestrian traffic right in the middle of a traffic lane. I don't think that that's a safe or viable option at all.
Okay. Which already is. Halftime, you go up there and your snowmobile's parked in the road and you got to wait for them to move their snowmobiles out of the road.
Yeah, I was, again, I was thinking that that was already, no, no parking on that side. It'd be nice to see that changed. Because that's been a problem for the last three years in a row.
We need to try and expand parking in that whole area. But yeah, to allow another use there, I, I just don't.
I don't think we have.
On the west side of the road between Francie Wallace and Brush Creek.
There's no parking.
There's no parking?
That's what I thought.
Why are they still doing it? Okay. Well, there we go. I thought it said parking on this side only.
You know, when I, when I talk to him, because I, I, we always want to support private sector businesses, but to have a coffee truck parked on the road and then people stopping to get coffee.
They're riding their snowmobiles up to it or walking up to it. It doesn't matter. It's not safe.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a tough deal. It really is. And I feel bad for him, but yeah.
We'd have to, I was going to say, Jeff, I think to fall in line with what we've done like at Cabartan Ramp, we would have to give them a, I don't know, was that a conditional use permit?
I'm sure, yeah.
Like a vendor's permit essentially.
I mean, he can talk to others in that area. If there's any private ground anywhere that, you know, they would lease to him or something like that, but.
As you get past Dead Horse Bridge, it's all steep. What else? We got recycle center, put the loader in there again, put some recycled asphalt down on top of.
Good use of product.
Yeah, Max did his best to do with frozen ground to get everything to drain out the back. Guy that watches that up there, Steve. Steve, yeah. He was pretty thankful for getting it fixed.
I know. He's been catching a lot of grief over that.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of questions on the road going in and out of that.
We're going to be putting some material on that too.
You are, okay.
Right now, all my material's frozen.
Is that going to be like a road mix or something?
The only thing we have left up there is recycled asphalt, so that's what's going to go down on it.
Does that pack down pretty well?
Oh, yeah. Packs down just like asphalt does.
You roll it?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Getting out onto the road, I, I took that road east Lake Fork, whatever it was, this past weekend. It was really muddy. So we are.
Out of the recycle area?
Yeah, getting out the back and going around and coming.
Oh, around the back.
Yeah, if you were coming, you know, out and taking a left and going back around to the entrance off of Lake Fork there, that was, that was the worst part by far.
Okay, it'll be froze here in a couple of days, so.
Until it's not.
That doesn't help in the spring. Jeff, that doesn't help at all. You have a limited window right there.
We should have our patching tied up at the end of this week. Just been out doing that. Older and roads.
Did you, going back to the recycle center one more time, did you ever get a, a chance to talk to Scott Carnes about that mower area down towards the Baylor? He had expressed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody's ever asked me, talked to me about that.
I sent, I sent you an email. I think it was right after that conversation, but basically he was just saying that they've been trying to clean it up with their skid steer and then it's really rough on them as far as bouncing through there with the skid steer.
Oh.
He was wondering if we could get a, a blade down there and just buff it out a little bit.
Probably next year.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Everything's frozen solid right now. Might get a warm afternoon here in the next week. I don't know. It's, we still got roads to blade too, but they're, everything's pretty much halted now.
Sounds like you need a heated blade.
Run heated. Our, all of our geothermal in Valley County just need to run it underneath our road so they stay bare. S Bridge had a bad wreck on it or two. Thursday? Thursday of the holiday?
Is it just because they're going too fast?
It was black ice. I mean, it rained that evening and it froze and it was 28 degrees out.
That was especially bad.
It was, and it was foggy. But it's all related to speed. I mean, it's, doesn't matter if the road's straight. If we straighten that bridge out, people are going to still do 60 miles an hour out through there. It's just.
So is there a, any kind of a safety grant that we could get?
It's on my safety grant. It's already there. There's going to be a sign on both ends and it's going to be expensive. It's going to have humidity sensors in it. It's going to have temperature sensors in it. And then it's going to have a road temperature sensor in it. And when all those parameters get right, this thing's going to light up and say slick. We had a guy last year or two years ago, he wrecked on the S Bridge, called me up, started chewing me out. I go, there's a sign on both sides that says, might be slick. And he goes, no, there's not. And I, I went out there and looked and called him back and it shows a car with the wiggles behind it. He goes, well, I thought that was for a Kirby Road.
What do you do? Well, I'm just wondering about a construction grant at all for safety, you know? Because that, that really, if you think about the number of people that that drains, you know, I mean, that is a huge risk.
Huge.
Yeah.
And then to add people who don't know how to drive, you know, that are going out to the resort. I mean, you know, you got a lot of, a lot of traffic going out there.
Right. So I can get with parametrics. Somebody did a, they had all the plans in that for that.
Redesign.
20 years ago. Nothing ever happened. I don't know why. I, I was just a grunt back then.
Probably should pull those, those plans out and, you know, have Mary work on funding with all of the infrastructure money that's out there right now.
That'd be a good one.
Especially with the, the focus on safety. Just because we have had so many accidents there. If you have any numbers, any data behind that, you know.
Sheriff's Office would have all that stuff.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, Mary can pull that.
Fatality pins on my state map, but I don't have, I got, I don't know what, how they're classified A, B, C, and D or something like that, but others.
Pins on your state map. Is that new technology or is that?
What?
Pins on your map.
Yeah. I don't know what it is.
Sorry, Jeff.
It's digital.
Little, little red dots.
Visual mapping.
I don't know what they're called. Other than that, that's about it. We're just kind of in that mode waiting for snow.
You've got your LRIP grant application for transportation plan?
Letter of support.
When are we supposed to, to learn if we actually get that?
Probably in February.
Okay.
Yep.
They have to move forward one way or another because it's been too long.
Yeah.
Hoping we get that.
Yeah, we, we got a deal back from LTAC saying that the reason we didn't get it last year was because of this, this, and this. So I think between me and Mary, we got those two things fixed. So hopefully we can get this thing. And it's almost, I, I guess it is an update, but it's, should do an update every four years on it or something like that.
Especially at the way, rate that we're growing and changing up here.
Yeah.
Because ours was in, what, 2007?
Eight. But, but an update is considered sticky notes on the pages. And I, I did a lot of that updating when I took over, this rose not gravel anymore. Put a note in there saying when we paved it with what type of material. And so it's been kept up, but now it just, all those sticky notes need to be.
I think I told you I called that firm to see if we could get a digital copy of it. And they were like, we don't even have files coming back that long.
Holiday.
I, you, I, I think they changed names, but I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, it was Holiday Engineering back in 2008.
And they have a different name though. I mean, it's still the same company.
Oh, okay. Yeah, most of those guys still, even the parametrics, they'll hold our files for so long and then they'll ship everything they have to send to me or whatever. And then that way their computers don't get overloaded, I guess. We're still waiting on our inventory program. Was going to go down here and knock on the door and see if anybody was down there.
Jeremy told us he's waiting on the contract from them to send to Oki so that we can get that reviewed and looked at and signed.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of what he's holding for right now.
Okay.
Mary had asked, are you in the office in the morning?
Yes.
Mary had asked to do an update on priorities. If you and I and her could meet in the morning, I'm going to work tomorrow instead of Wednesday.
Oh, is that, oh, is that what that email was corresponding to?
Yeah. So if you want, you know.
If I can come up here or whatever.
11, 10, 11, whatever. Just respond to whatever works for you. And I'll make sure I'm here in time.
Yep. I got to leave about one, take wife to some physical therapy, so.
That works. So we'll set some priorities.
We need to sign a letter for that grant application. Mary had sent something over.
Did you bring the?
I didn't bring nothing because.
I got it printed off.
However, however, however it was, she sent it to me. It won't let me open any of her stuff. Some Adobe Plus or something like that.
A Word document.
Huh?
It's a Word document.
Well, she opened, sent me. I couldn't open it. I emailed her back and told her I couldn't open it. It seems like last time this happened, Jeremy just said, update your Adobe or whatever. It won't let me do it without administration.
Open a ticket with him and.
Yeah.
Get down there. I asked him about your phone system too. He said that's, that one's kind of an easy one, so he'll be prioritizing that and getting your phone system fixed.
I think we're the only ones, I think, that.
You and the annex.
Who?
You and the annex.
Oh. Other than that, I think we're, the willows are in, plows are still getting worked on, so hopefully we got everything ready to roll first time it snows. We've, we've plowed Big Creek Summit a couple of times already.
You've got people back there at Big Creek right now?
No, Big Creek Summit.
Oh, which one?
First hill you go over before you get to Warm Lake.
Oh, got it.
That's Big Creek Summit.
Got it.
Just need a motion.
How much snow's at the top of the hill there?
He didn't say. I'm, it seems like last time I looked, there was like six inches up there.
Oh, sorry. The only question I had is, it says on the agenda, it's L-H-R-I-P and then the, the actual letter says it's LTAC.
It's an LTAC.
So LRIP is a grant under LTAC.
I just didn't understand that.
Okay, so LTAC is Local Highway Technical Assistance Council. LRIP is Local Highways.
Improvement.
Yeah, something improvement program.
I just hadn't seen that before. I want to make sure we were talking about the same thing on both, both sides.
Yeah, there's LRIP, there's L-CIP, there's.
Too many acronyms.
Well, that's what I said to Melissa earlier. She throws out all these acronyms and I said, you got to come in with a glossary of terms if you want us to track on this.
That's what I tell the engineers when they come up. I have to ask them what all these algorithm, or whatever they are, abbreviations for everything almost every time.
Perfect. Well, I'll make a motion that we sign a, a letter of support for the LRIP grant application for the transportation plan.
Will you also approve the actual application?
Yes, I will amend my statement to say the grant application and letter of support.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're also working on a child safety crossing grant. This next go around that'll be on a timberline in West Roseberry at the Meadows.
I have had multiple people ask me, what's up with the highway spray paint that says school outside of Lake Fork? Was that just an oversight?
They, they did things, they replaced things that were already there. It used to be a school crossing right there at the top. Crossing has been wore off for years, but the school was still kind of readable, so.
Where's the school crossing in Lake Fork now?
And they said school.
Did away with the striped line through the 45, which was nice.
Yeah. But there's nothing on the north side of.
No school crossing.
Lake Fork coming in that says school or school crossing. But the south side, it just says school. It'll be wore off by the time winter's over with, so. Okay, what do I got to get from Doug? Something that was notarized.
Let me get all of these laser fished in. And once we do that, we'll either email it to you or put them in your box tomorrow.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
You guys do.
Thank you. Your wife's doing better?
Yeah, she's, uh, started physical therapy on her left foot, broken foot. She can't do anything with it till the sixth. So I'm still, she's off this week, so I can actually work full days for her physical therapy tomorrow. She can't drive because it's her right foot and she can't run the gas and the brake.
Yep. And just thank Kevin's, it's up here and not in the valley.
Yeah. That's what I told her.
There's things to be thankful for.
Send you a voice and you can live with one of my cousins or something down there. Nope, we're all good.
Okay, good. What are you keeping Sarah busy with?
She is a scanning fool right now.
Good. That's awesome.
I don't know how many bags of shredded stuff we've hauled out to the dumpster since she started. She was really going through those back filing cabinets and, yeah.
Good news.
Yep, she's a. Yep, she's a, she's good.
Good.
More computer.
Self-motivated.
Computer literate than me and Mickey, so we're still paper.
Be open-minded to learning, Jeff.
I know, I know, we're trying.
Those pins in the paper might have to go away someday.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of empty filing cabinets here pretty quick.
Good.
That's, that was the main thing she's been working on and she's coming up with kind of throwing different things out to me and Mickey about, you know, about if we try this to move things along a little faster and.
Awesome.
Yep, go for it and we'll see if it works or not.
Good news. Good.
Yep, yep, good asset. Other than that, I think we're fully staffed. Ready to go.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm not, but everybody else is, I guess.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Be in the morning then.
What time? Are you sending me an email?
Either ten or eleven. You just tell me what works for you.
Okay, let's just nail it on ten.
Ten, okay, that works.
Okay.
All right, I'll respond to Mary. Okay. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session for Indigent.
I will make a motion to go into executive session per Idaho Code seven four two oh six one D.
Second, by roll call?
Ding and aye.
Hop and aye. All right, so we're in executive session. We will see you back at eleven forty-five.